Nice surprise, a good surprise. I like good surprises. We have a rule though, right? No surprises, no bad surprises. All right, we'd like to call this meeting to order if everyone would rise for the I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming tonight. Sorry Bill will not be with us. He has a medical issue and Noah eventually will be with us. She's currently playing soccer in the finals or the beginning of the finals and we'll know probably within minutes whether the Morse girls had success or not.
They were hit to nothing.
That's what I heard, that Dean said, yeah. Fingers crossed. Just a couple of things that I wanted to mention. First of all, and I've been saying it a lot, but I really mean it. The reports that we have been getting from administration have been excellent. The data in there has been really helpful, gives me, I feel like I'm really getting up to speed with what's going on at the schools and I think the administrators are doing a great job and it's good to see some of that really pertinent data about what's happening in their schools. So those have been very beneficial. Another thing as a community, something we need to think about, something that Patrick, Steve and I were talking about is the community needs to be aware that the state of Maine is creating a new list for time for schools and if we currently have Dieter and Fisher Mitchell on that list, I think as a community we need to begin to have a discussion. Do we want to resubmit applications and what do those applications look like? I know we're right in the middle of this Morse project. It wasn't that long ago we finished up with the Woolwich project, but I think as a community it would benefit us and as a board to have the discussion about the other schools in the RSU and whether or not it would be worthwhile to submit another application and what that application would look like. Another topic that's been in the news and I just wanted to touch on briefly and I'm sure Dean can probably speak to this a lot better than I can. I know it's been in the news, in Maine news coming out of the governor's office. A little bit of criticism about the MLTI program. And I just want to say my experience with MLTI within the district is it has been a really beneficial program to us. There have been some growing pains that we've experienced with the program. Understanding the devices, how students use the device, how those devices are treated when they go home. But the one thing I will say that RSU One has done as long as we've been part of that program and as long as I've been on the board is that our technology department every year analyzes what is working with this program, what is not working and if there are issues that they're having with either the devices or the implementation or the software that they've been proactive. And certainly these devices, there are issues. It's new technology and technology is constantly changing. But I just want to say from my perspective, this district has always been on top of how do the students use those computers, how are they going to be used when they go home? And we've created policies and procedures, both recommendations that have come from the technology department and decisions that the board has made. So I want to say that I feel that the program has been a success within RSU One. I think it's really benefited our kids. And where we have had challenges, and there will always be challenges, we've always addressed those. So I just wanted to get that out there. So those are my comments for tonight. We will move on to item 4.0. We need to approve and amend the minutes of September 26, 2016. Is there a motion on these minutes? Move to approve by Alan. Second by Steve. Just take a moment to go through them, see if there were any changes, additions. Didn't have anything, anyone else? No? Okay, so just like to take a vote on that motion. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, please raise your hand. Not opposed? Passes. Item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. We did have one that Patrick suggested. Under new business, item 11.3, technology update. We would like to move that up to item 7.2. Change that to 7.2. Any adjustments from the board? Item 6.0, public session. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Okay. Then we'll begin with item 7.0. We have now two community presentations or two presentations. We'll start with Maine Maritime Museum. Jonathan Wells is here. And Patrick, I'll turn this over to you.
Yeah, as we talked a little earlier this year, I thought it would be beneficial to bring Jonathan in to do a brief presentation for the board and for the public here. Jonathan has been very helpful for what I would consider to have the district, I guess I would say regain that close relationship that we maybe used to have many years ago when money wasn't so much an issue. But Jonathan has been great along with the other staff at Maine Maritime to find grants to work with our teachers and last year when I met with them, they then set up work, worked with our teachers and our teachers have been very impressed with Maine Maritime and how willing they are to adapt their offerings to our curriculum. And so I just wanted to have Jonathan come in today and really kind of elaborate on the relationships that we've been able to establish and some of the projects that we currently have going on. So thanks Jonathan for coming today.
Yeah, thank you Patrick. Yeah, so thank you for having me Patrick. As he said, we met last spring and informed Patrick that we had come across some money. As he said, it's been some time since we've really had kind of an in-depth relationship at RSU One and saw this as an opportunity to make that connection once again. On a pretty significant level, I think. This program that we created, which you'll see on the packet here on the first page, is called A Sense of Place. And we thought that that was kind of a priority for us and what we could be really effective at bringing to kids at RSU One. So we chose the second grade, the fourth grade, seventh grade to focus on. And we're hoping in the future that we can also serve all of the 10th graders as well. So you see on that first page, we're bringing out second graders to visits to the museum that we funded, busing, programming, everything that comes along with that kind of thing. Fourth grade as well, two visits to the museum annually. And really kind of the crown jewel of the program of where we've been putting a lot of effort into is the seventh grade portion. And that is seventh graders coming out four times during the school year and then having a project in the end where they actually design and put into place an exhibit at the museum. Where it's open to the public, it will be on the floor for a month. So we're very proud of that and that is currently taking place. The second and fourth grade portions, we're still planning, but you'll see some topics under each one of those schools. But essentially we're going all the way from 1607, the Poppin Colony and all the way, eventually we would like to explore topics like naval architecture, stem-related fields, marine technology, let's say at the 10th grade. If you turn to that second page, you'll see some photographs of seventh graders. What they're working on in this picture is really looking at archival sciences, material culture, examination of actual artifacts from the museum collection. Each time they come out, they're going to be looking at the in-depth, really getting their hands on these objects that are typically, for lack of a better word, in the basement, waiting to be put on the table. So the teachers, like Patrick said, have been really happy so far. I think it's been really going off well. It's every Wednesday for the seventh graders, 11:30 to 1:30. And pretty much the overall thing that I keep hearing is we've been waiting for this kind of reconnect with the museum. So I think we're very, very fortunate to be able to do this through some funding that came in through a donor, but we're still looking for more funding to make this happen for the next two years as well. If you open this page, let's fold it over. You'll just see a detailed education plan of the seventh grade portion. It is a little complicated with that news news, but I'm sure you're all used to these logistical complications. So we have essentially four groups coming out from BMS in Woolwich coming out as well. Four visits to the museum. Basically divided in half looking at material culture, archival sciences, like I said. But then also doing a lot of hands-on work with myself during half that time period. Some in-class assignments. We were actually able to get every single student a copy of Maine in the scene, which they've taken into the classrooms and we're going to be doing in-class assignments with that book. And then like I said, kind of the capstone for that portion is going to be the second page. So we are really excited about this. It's just got picked off. We're ready to do our second visit this week at BMS and we're all really excited and thankful to everyone. We've been very supportive of the program. Please contact me if you have any questions, if you'd like to talk about anything like capitalism.
Okay, thank you Jonathan. Okay, is there anyone from the board who has some questions? Kenny?
I have some for the fourth grade experience there. Does that tie in at all with the ecology or the types of things that they're doing in the classroom with the touch tanks that they have? I think it's fourth grade in terms of this is, you know, this is figuring out the world around us and this is what's in this ocean, this is what exists there. I mean, it's amazing how many families here living so close to the water don't have that connection. And so when we brought those touch tanks in the classroom, it was really extraordinary. Does any of that kind of tie in with what you focus on in the fourth grade?
Well, I apologize. I haven't heard about the touch tanks. But part of the fourth grade portion is actually, one of their visits is going on our new cruise boat up to Mary Meeting Bank where we're looking at probably what's related to those touch tanks, life cycle, insect and turbidity tests, things like that. So yeah, we're kind of timed at least to the science and technology standards, if you will. And I've heard that along with kind of that estuary land trust that we're kind of aligning with the exact things that they're doing. So it's a kind of a nice piece to actually bring them up there as well and then have another nonprofit kind of network there, if you will.
Any other questions from the board? Steve, I'm just curious, in putting the content together, did your educators work with teachers to kind of find out what our classroom objectives were and try to manage it?
Yeah, that's, so I'm sorry, really going 50,000 feet with this, but yeah. In the spring, after meeting with Patrick, we talked about when we could meet in August. So we've actually met with probably 80% of all the teachers and we're about to finalize the curriculum for what we want to do with that second and fourth grade other visit as well. And at first we thought every student would be doing the same thing for every class, but we've had a little bit of time and a little bit of logistical leeway where we can actually tailor it to the units there. So for transportation, we're going to apply that to vessels and small water craft. So yes, we are tied into exactly what we're doing, yeah.
Anyone else from the board? I just have a question for you. How long do you see this program existing? How long will the funding carry?
Well, we have a portion for the second year for next year and a portion for the third year. So that's kind of the plan, at least for now. But we are pursuing other funding all the time and, you know, would love to see it buy in from other sources as well to continue it after we have seen the success in the first year.
Well, I just want to say I really appreciate the fact that you guys are doing this. We tried, it was eight or nine years ago, had met with Amy Len and tried to see where there was opportunities for, you know, the RSU to work with Maine Maritime and it was simply a lack of funding that prevented us from doing it. So I'm glad this opportunity has come up and it really ties in with, as a district, a lot of what we're trying to do, have more experiential learning, place-based learning and tie those units together. So when the kids are doing Barry Beach or Flow or some of the work with Cal or work with you, have all of that integrated so that it works with our curriculum and it also, one thing is building off another. So I really appreciate what you're doing. Your timing is great for the district, so.
Thank you. Yeah, Patrick, we, our first meeting, we definitely learned that we were on the exact same page.
Yeah.
Fulfilling each other's or your needs and our mission.
Yep, that's super. All right, anyone else from the board? Okay, Jonathan, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 7.2, we have a technology update. Dean?
So we have Dean Emerson here and Bob Jordan, our new tech integrator. Most of you know Bob and Dean as well. But we just thought it would be good to do a brief as a start of the school year of what's new in technology, what's going to went well, highlight some of the positives. So Dean?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments earlier. Certainly the program MLTI and use of technology in general in the district, we really want to take a look at purposeful use of technology. And I think that's what you see more and more articles about screen time, children of all ages. It's really about how much screen time do they get, but what are they doing with it when they get it? And that's why we want to take a look at our use of the technology and ask, when are we using it? And why are we using it at all times? Because simply using it because we have it is not necessarily productive. I think that's where some of those comments can overcome from is not necessarily having a good sense of when we use it. So that's what we are working on. Certainly this year, one of the things that we did, we brought Screenagers to the RSU One, which is a 110-minute, 70-minute documentary about the use of technology in our society. But not the video games, visual addiction, use of cell phones, all sorts of things. And what that did for us was really start a conversation, which was our goal. It wasn't necessarily popular with teenagers because it sort of raises questions about the use of those devices that are so very important to, you know, their everyday lives. But what we have heard back from teachers as well as from community members is that the conversation was created, there were good, meaningful discussions in classrooms and outside of classrooms and homes with people in their teams about the use of the technology. So we showed that to students in grades six through 12. And then in partnership with Patrick's library, a community showing as well. You know, about 50 people from the community attended that. As I said, in posts and surveys that came back and anecdotal conversations with teachers, what we heard was even if they didn't like the movie, it started new conversations. So I think that was successful. That was really what we were looking for. And again, that all ties into our goal is to be purposeful about the use of technology. As we take a look at the technology in this district, I think the challenge for us is always getting PD because you've always done a terrific job of providing us with a compass and giving students and teachers the opportunity to have access to the technology. So what we're looking at is how do we get people enough training and guidance to make sure that that purposeful use of technology is there, right? So in the summertime, we offer our summer technologies to, we've done every year for, since at least 2001. We had between 30 and 40 people attend various sessions. We had one day in June, we had two days in August. Attendance was down a little this year. We're not really sure whether it was just timing. Not out of curiosity, we surveyed people and asked, you know, what would be a good time for us to offer this? There's no time that's perfect for everyone in the summer, obviously. But we'll continue to refine that, take a look at those sessions and continue to try to use the moment there. But that's a great opportunity for the staff to get together, a self-selected group, they volunteer their time to commit and share with one another their success. That's been a good, strong PD opportunity for us. This year, actually just a week ago, we sent 15 people to the ACTI conference, which is a one-to-two day thing, a session you sign up for, a conference in Augusta, which is held annually. And that is a session, that's two days that are available. And the focus is really on teaching the technology in the classroom. Very few of the sessions are technical in nature, they're not really for tech directors. They're really much more geared towards here technologies, here successes that people are having in the classroom. Here are different ways to use various resources. So we had 15 people attend that, which was terrific. If you recall, a few years ago, we actually sent the entire district to ACTI one at a time when our schedules lined up. So that's another PD opportunity we can see in two years. And I'm going to actually turn this over to Bob Jordan. As you know, Bob is our new technology integrator, primarily for grades six through 12, most of the time ninth through 12. Bob has a longstanding history here at the high school and he's been doing a terrific job of getting out into classrooms, meeting the teachers and students about the use of technology. I think he has some good firsthand examples to share.
Thank you. As Dean said, the point of using technology is to improve teaching and learning. That's really it. Technology is more important than that and my job is to kind of help the teachers do that. And I just want to talk through kind of a couple of ways that I do that and maybe give you some examples of that. It really starts with a base. If teachers aren't comfortable with their device and using it for their day-to-day work, they're not going to be effective. So for example, I've worked quite a bit with a teacher who'd been out of the district for four or five years and has come back and all of a sudden they're not answering the cloud, okay? The grading system looks different. So I've been visiting with that teacher on a fairly regular basis and helping them do little things, okay? None of it's hard, but working with me in real time, they're solving problems that they've been fretting over on a Sunday afternoon and, you know, spending hours doing when they're with their families or they've been correcting or doing something else. So that's an example of one person that I spend a lot of time with. But there's also experience stat as well, right? You don't have forgotten how to set that up or something's changed. A new operating system went in the summer, all of a sudden machines didn't work. So sometimes this is just a five-minute conversation and problems are fixed. And nobody's going to go on and do something more sophisticated if they don't have that work in place. The next sort of level of pyramid here is setting up class systems, okay? So, and this is nothing more sophisticated, it's just a technological way of doing, of handing out papers and collecting papers and making announcements, okay? So setting up class websites. Many classrooms use Google Classroom now. Some textbooks are delivered, okay? Now, the first time a teacher does that, often do that once a year, okay? Who's got the codes? Things aren't working. They do a setup like this once a year. I've visited several classrooms and I come in, I've got a set thing to do. We have two adults in a classroom, so if somebody's having trouble with their password, we can troubleshoot that and maybe have some good examples. The kids are up and running in no time and you've got a functional sort of classroom, okay? Now, we haven't really talked about anything that's interactive. There's really nothing more sophisticated than I've talked about so far. It can't be more efficient than getting a paper back before. But the power of education starts to come when you're doing things that are interactive, okay? And my job is to kind of show teachers this and convince them to invest the time that it takes to be able to use that effectively in the classroom. It's kind of you're asking teachers to take a risk, okay? If something glitches, they've got a period with their students, they need to advance their curriculum and so they've got to be pretty confident that things are going to work. So the type of work I do with teachers is point out things that might work with them. I spend the time figuring out sort of how it works, fit with them and how to make that happen. But a lot of it's also kind of publicity. There's a, this is the most recent professional development day. I took about 15 minutes at the end of the day and introduced a product called Kahoot. Kahoot is just an online quiz system, okay? Normally if you did a quiz in class, the teacher would ask a question, people would raise their hands. They had one person would answer with Kahoot. Everybody answers at the same time. There's kind of some lagging music that goes with it, they're scoring. And I think that was a way of just showing teachers, here's something that you can put in place pretty quickly. I can help you if you like and this is something that has been road tested. There's several teachers in the building that already use this with some success. You can do this with confidence and we can help you do it. And then there are other products too where we're using the technology is to communicate, react to one another. The last part, you talked about this, is the real magic comes when you're using the technology to produce things, okay? Now, the Academy program is doing a program called Veterans Voices, okay? And some of our students who have been challenged in the regular classroom, the project for them was to meet with members of the community who are veterans. They had a list of questions that were set up that they were going to talk to and they did some recordings with some devices. So as the tech coordinator, I came in, made sure everybody had a device that worked and they knew where they were going to store that information and it would be available for them later on, okay? So, and because they wanted to talk to these people, the veterans, as humans, not be all kinds of flustered around with things. Now, this, the information that they collected is going to be put into presentations. Many of the veterans brought artifacts with them, okay? And so eventually the idea is to take the results of the interview, turn it into a presentation, perhaps a slideshow, include pictures with it and have a real full-fledged presentation, okay? So everything's been integrated together. Now, if I'm doing my job right, these components that I've talked about eventually become visible, okay? You know, the first time you use Google Classroom, it's, well, how does this work? Where are things going? I've already seen teachers have used it for a couple of years. You set it up and half the kids have done it already, the teachers come with it. It's really just go to Google Classroom and get to work on the assignment. You're not spending time with the setup. So my job is to help people all the time get over the, this is new, how does this work? There was a time in schools where using email was a kind of a weird thing, right? And so my job is to be able to spend the time with teachers in real time when they need it. Summer sessions are really helpful, but now I'm doing it with students. I have time available to do that. So that's kind of where I'm doing, what I'm about. The challenge is finding time for teachers, okay? Oftentimes there are some big projects and everybody gets very, very busy and so where is the time to do it? My time's a little bit flexible, so I can come and put out a fire and also think about something. So that's some really good, what I'm looking to come. Any questions I could answer?
Any questions from the board? I had a couple. Do you feel that the staff knows that they have access to you? Are they aware across the district that they have access to you? Are they aware across the district that they have access to you and do they know how to get in touch with you?
I'm in sixth to 12 and I did a presentation at each one of the, I've met with the teachers everywhere. At the first faculty meeting of the year, I did a presentation in school, I met with folks, yeah.
And my second question is, so you mentioned this one software, this one program that you were introducing, Kahoot, right? How do you determine if something is valuable to be used in the classroom, to suggest it to staff? Is it, is it a decision that you make on your own or is it something that you work with administration or they bring something to you and say, we'd like to get this integrated into, you know, all of eighth grade?
Some products are kind of, are set up with what, with the packages that we, that we work within the district. So the kind of priorities, I mean, Google applications. The teachers use them, they like them, they're reliable. So Google Docs, Slides and things like that, that would be part of it. On the iPads, there are loaded apps that are with it. And so, you know, the ones that we have paid for already, those are some of the ones that are prioritized as well. Some of the outside apps that are downloaded, like that one in particular, I knew several teachers who may use it in the classroom effectively and liked it. And that's kind of, that's sort of another part of my job. Somebody's doing something in one corner of the world, oftentimes we make those pieces of presentations and then they become the experts and everybody's asking these questions. They might not have time to turn to be everybody's consultant on that software or, you know, but I can, okay? And if I don't know that one in particular, I can get trained on it. And so Kahoot in particular had a track record with a number of, some teachers have used it because, as Steve said, and refused this in other classrooms, could be, could be used here, right? So my goal there was to, you know, find something that could work. And the part of the vetting process, is this something real? Sometimes you go to a presentation, you see an expert do something and that's great, but then when you get into it, it turns out to be complicated, doesn't work out quite right. So before I'm recommending something, I'm pretty confident that it can work and I kind of know it, know it inside and out. So the usability is really important to, I'm hoping that they can all work and recommend.
So is it the same, whatever the hardware is, is it, you're choosing the software at the same time? At least a certain amount of it?
There's really a, most of the, most of the providers are interested in going across platforms. I mean, Google runs on all the machines that we have in the district, that will squeeze the things. And something like Kahoot is, you know, one of their marketing efforts or one of the things that makes them attractive is they work on many devices. Something like Kahoot, teachers feel differently about having phones in the, you know, in the classroom. But that's the sort of thing where you can say, you got a phone, enter this in, you're playing the game.
I would just add, whenever possible, we try to select resources that aren't specific to the community, so that we're not locked in long-term to a particular platform based on resources.
Right, I guess I'm just asking, but, but part of the selection, I mean, is that you're also having, well, here is, so the teachers know not only the hardware, but they know what kind of software they have available going into that gear.
Okay.
Is how, is how, I'm just trying to understand the logistics of how you make that work.
All right, well, I guess what I would say is, I'm supposed to talk, yeah? The, you know, because we deal primarily with four-year agreements, teachers know that the resources that are available will happen. If it's through MLTI, they'll have them for at least those four years. And we don't, we don't really change, we don't take resources away. If somebody's been using that resource, we try to make it available. Where that sometimes gets us into a tricky spot is at the end of a four-year agreement with MLTI. For as an example, at the seventh and eighth grade this year, where we had that, what we state called the force regression, seventh and eighth grade, where we had to renew MLTI a year early, the software that they were accustomed to using did change because the packages that were available had changed. Not only did change devices, their back to MacBook, but the software also changed. Generally, we try not to make changes to the resource.
Any other, Steve?
You know, part of my interest in, in supporting, budget decision last year for a tech integrator is linked to the new school, new high school. And I know you Dean are involved or will be involved in setting the technology, identifying what technology we want to put in the building and, and so I just, it's just a challenge. This is, you know, this is a, your activity, not only a day-to-day sort of activity, but it's formative in the sense that we, we're going to be, I'm sure, intrigued and enticed by information that will enable us to load up this new building with technology. But we've got to match, you know, we've got to match that expenditure and those expectations that we have and what technology can do, where our staff is in terms of how they apply it. So, I mean, it's a very, you know, the timing of this is really, is really terrific in my opinion. It's, it's just up to us and up to you more than the board in the first instance, to take advantage of this to, we can't, to get that aligned between an opportunity to create a very, very state-of-the-art building with the techno, with the appropriate technology for learning and yet bring the staff along at the same time so that, so that those two, those two match. You know, we've got, we've got our, our, our technology that can support learning in the 21st century and we've got staff that can, that can access and those have used that technology to, to achieve our goals and objectives. So again, you've got a big, a big lift and I'm glad we're starting.
I agree. I think that it's going to be, it's been the process, it's not just, Bob and I will be facilitating those conversations, but it'll really be staff talking about their functional requirements. What is it that they currently do with technology in their education and what is it that they would like to be able to do? And what we'll be doing is facilitating those conversations and taking a look at the new emerging technologies that are out there, but really filtering that through what do they want to be able to do with students and what experiences do they want those students to have? And that's how we'll help to identify, and really the staff will be very involved in that process of identifying the appropriate products and technology because they're self, you know, one, we have to be able to purchase it, they have to be able to know how to use it effectively, and we have to be able to support it afterwards and replace it when it comes to end of life. And that's, that's a lot to do.
Anyone else from the board? Any other questions? Anything else you guys wanted to add?
Good?
All right.
We'll do a longer one for you.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have three committee reports. We'll begin with item 8.1, the Moore's High School Building Project Update. Patrick?
Just a brief overview, the option to purchase Wing Farm has been signed, so we are moving forward with that. We've met with the Department of Education, we've met with LaValle Brensinger, which is our architectural firm, and we also had a district building committee all over the last two weeks. And so it's, we're down to a point now where there's still some surveying being done at Wing Farm. It should be completed either by today or tomorrow. Again, I know Sabaico Techniques was up there today, I know some, one of the surveyors put a kayak in the water behind the man field between Wing Farm. DOT has been in there. So I, we're starting to get, if you look at the minutes that you received today from Steve LaPorte from LaValle Brensinger, you're going to start to see kind of a fun part. It starts now, in my opinion. The last couple of meetings, they've taken these little, I don't know, colorful pieces and kind of started to look at it. What would the building look like from the outside? Not getting into so much how we're integrating our academics with vocational, but they've looked at the building on Wing Farm, would it be near the front? Would it be near the back? What would face Commerce Street? What side vocational might go on? What side the academics might go on? Where would the gym and the auditorium go? And then, so we have some building pieces and then Kylie Mason from Sabaico Techniques was able to look at a building that would go on this site and then be able to draw, do we have sufficient parking? Do we have room for two or three fields out behind? Where would the bus drop off be? Now we're at a point where we're giving information of how many buses show up in the morning, how many buses line up in the afternoon, what kind of form of traffic do we want? So nothing's carved in stone at this point, but those are the types of discussions that we're having. So our architectural firm and Sabaico Techniques feel confident that we have the room that we need at Wing Farm to have a very state-of-the-art school as well as the sufficient parking, sufficient fields that we're looking for at this point. And looking at, for example, Anchor Road, what would we do with Anchor Road? That would probably be the main entrance building at this point right now. And so it's starting to get more details. The next meeting that we have is November 3rd. And my hope is before our next board meeting, that we'll have a straw poll vote that we would advertise very well in the communities. And again, that straw poll vote is, there'll be some drawings, but it's primarily for the people that attend, it's to get their vote of confidence that the site of Wing Farm is acceptable to move forward. And then hopefully a couple of weeks after, we go to the State Board of Education for their approval, maybe a few members of our building committee might go up to Augusta to do that brief presentation. So in the meantime, we have staff going to, I think it's called the Foster Applied School of Technology, it's about the loop, to look at their technology center. We've been to Wells. We may have a few people go to Hammond Academy, so some recent schools to get some ideas. It has been exciting so far and we'll continue to do that. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Patrick? Kenny?
So this is way down the road, but the, the, the page for the program organization, I was just trying, starting to just kind of look at a little where the things go. There's something called WOW. I didn't know what that was.
WOW.
W O W.
That's probably, that's probably World of Work. It's our life skills program here at that Moore's.
Oh, okay.
So that, that, those circles that you, that you have in your packet that Ron and Steve have put together, I mean, it's kind of a conceptual framework.
Right.
And the next step would be that they're going to be actually putting, those circles are going to turn more into blocks and it'll be easier for you guys to interpret. But again, Julie Caddy, our director of Vocational School, and Jay Pigerton, have had some really good discussions so far about, you know, when you walk into a school, right now we're looking at having one main entrance, doesn't mean that we wouldn't have a separate entrance to say the athletics into a performing arts auditorium piece as well. But when you come in, you know, how integrated do we want to have vocational with the academic piece? What are the pros, what are the cons to that piece? And where do you put your, you know, where do you put your offices? And again, the state is starting to weigh in on what they'd like to see in the school building as well, which we have to take into some consideration, but we make this our own, obviously.
I was really glad that the alumni room is on there. You know, there were a couple of those things that you keep hearing from both the students and the community and just knowing that the alumni room is, is present in the consideration. And the other question I had was, with, just with this initial thing, is there something on this page that would represent what the kids now have as the case?
Yeah, I mean, Ron, Ron has heard that loud and clear from students and I think staff as well. You know, when you come into the main entrance, you just mentioned last week, you know, you come into a lobby, you know, one suggestion is maybe you come down a couple of stairs and that's a place where, you know, kids congregate, maybe some lockers there.
Yeah.
You know, he also, he calls it deck hockey, it's pool hockey, but, you know, that you could have a surface there where kids could play and that might not be realistic, but, you know, a place for them to be able to hang out. And again, there's a lot of conversation to happen in the communities because right now, LaValle just temporarily has some things built into the school right now that would not be covered by the state. And that could be a second gym, it could be a full-blown auditorium, it could be something like an alumni room, it could be adult head, it could be our office, it could be a large classroom, could be a technology lab that we're asking for an additional one. So again, we're going to share, eventually we're going to share what we have in there preliminary for extra costs, local costs. And then the board would be weighing in on that, the communities, the staff, everybody would be weighing in on that because eventually when it goes to referendum, that number, that the state can support will be there, but also what the local share would be as well.
Any other questions for Patrick? Steve?
Patrick, where, where are we with the middle school fields? I know there was a no, no committee minutes that you were talking to the city about perhaps approaching state end about the kids' alumni to the schools.
Yeah, I mean, we continue to make the point, and again, it's all a negotiation. We continue to make the point that we are, we have an athletic complex, yeah, at McMahon that we're, that we're not, so to speak, touching and we're asking for two or three good-sized practice fields, could be used for competition as well. And so, you know, our, our question to the state is if we'd like to have the, for example, the back softball field and the practice field up in the back and possibly get another practice field in the back is, could they recondition those or resurface those, or if you want to say? And, you know, at the same time, we'll get an answer from the state. And then, for example, one could argue that even if the state wouldn't support, for example, on that facility, even though it's city-owned at this point right now, because I don't think anybody locally would probably argue with the fact that we could use, you know, a new bathroom facility, locker room facility there, parking could be expanded and leveled out. So I would think, you know, that's a piece that's a little unique right now because, you know, the city does own, you know, those fields, but we are pushing to see what we can get because we think we, you know, we feel like we're, I almost think contributing, that probably not the right word, but we already have an athletic complex to some degree. So why, that's why we're pushing to have some of our fields reconditioned or resurfaced.
The fields would remain the city for, the city's for, we're not, at this point, we're not.
Yeah, I mean, we've had some initial conversations, but we, both sides have agreed that that would be a conversation for after we get through this process of getting, you know, referendum and state approval for this project.
Any other questions for Patrick? All right, I've got a couple. So with regard to the property, the option's been signed off. We now need a couple other entities to sign off. The federal government or Land and Water needs to sign off on that. We need to go to the straw poll. At what point will we execute a purchase and sale agreement? At what point will we have an official purchase and sale agreement?
I don't know how much time after the state board approves the site. We're much of a timing event, but that would be our next step after that.
Okay. And then generally, I was thinking about this when I got those minutes from the building committee and you touched on, on one of, one of the topics, which is originally, I know in some of those meetings, there had been discussion about BRCTC being fully integrated into, into Moore's. And then the drawings that I saw, just again, rough sketches, show them being separate. So as I kept thinking about that, I know that there's a process with anything and there's no right or wrong. We end up with a finished product that people weigh in on. But is there any way that we can formalize as a district, try and reach out to the public and reach out to the alumni, the community and, and formalize a process that says, beginning now, like you said, fun stuff starts now. If you want to participate, if you want to weigh in on these items, this is when the opportunities will be and at this date, the decision will be made. So we, we're not backtracking, people don't show up at the last minute and say, hey, wait a second, how did we get here? We can say, well, there were three or four meetings that led up to this point, you know, whether you chose to participate or not. But I, I think it's very important, if we're looking at spending additional funds on things that are above and beyond what the state is going to pay for, we need to first determine what those things are. And I know, you know, the theater has been a big ticket item, but I think that there are other things there. And also, just as this planning process goes along, in terms of getting public engagement, getting the community involved, if there was any way that we could say, November 15th is the kickoff date, for the next six months, we're going to have a series of meetings. At the end of that six-month period, we will have a finished product. Here's the schedule. Here will be the public's opportunity to weigh in, alumni's opportunity to weigh in, students' opportunity, so that everybody sort of has a one-page timeline that says, okay, I know that this is when this is going to happen and I know when this is done and here's my chance to show up and, and speak out. Would it be good if we could put something like that together? And I, I don't know if you've thought about that.
Yeah, I think we're, we have to wait till the- Yeah, I think we have to wait till the, till the site piece is complete, which hopefully is in the next month. You know, where my kids go to school, they're going through this process right now, and did exactly what you just said, maybe they're having a forum in each community, they're having, you know, they'll upload them on their website, and that's where people can get their buy-in. I rented to someone the other day that happens to be very involved in that process, and she kind of rolled her eyes and said, you know, at least somebody showed up at this meeting, and, you know, where they've been the last, you know, five or six meetings. So you always have to have that to some degree, I think, but no, we want as many people, as many, as much input Ron and Steve will be, we have forums more with kids too. I think, you know, it tends to be more the staff and the school board that tend to kind of have some recommendations and administration about, you know, how much integration, or for example, that are we going to continue to go with a department model, or for freshmen? Do we really feel strongly that we want to have a freshman, so to speak, wing where, you know, the disciplines are, you know, it's interdisciplinary, so that they're kind of supported a little bit more than just having departments everywhere. You know, at vocational, we're talking about adding a program or two. What year we add those, who knows? But again, does that provide us with some additional space that we can use for those programs? So, yeah, I mean, a lot of good conversations so far, it's just that we've got to get through the, I guess you'd say, the boring part of the site approval, and then we can start with the concept design, which involves a heck of a lot more people.
So from your perspective, when does the site piece get completed? After the straw poll?
Yeah, for us locally, it would be straw poll, and then we have to take that next step, and we have to get the approval from the State Board of Education, which again, I've asked if we can have that a couple of weeks right after the straw poll. We have to fill out some paperwork, we have to submit the site application to the state board. So I mean officially, it's done it over with when the state board approves the site.
Mid-November.
Well, I mean, mid-November, I'd like to have the straw poll, mid-to, you know, third week, working around the holiday there, and then it may be the end of November, beginning of December, before we can get to the State Board of Education. But I would say from December, or maybe right after the holidays, through for the next three or four months hard, we're going to be trying to get as much input as we can about the site concept, I mean, the concept design of the building.
So it might be a good idea to get our communication person, or our marketing person that we had used in the past, involved in this, and maybe, you know, pay for a couple of meetings just to get some, get her opinion on the best way to roll this out and make sure that we're communicating well with the community, and making sure that we're reaching out to all these different groups, you know, whatever it is, the, you know, the Main Street Bath, or the Chamber of Commerce, or, you know, the different fraternal organizations, alumni group. Because as we decide to have a local portion of the budget, we're going to want buy-in early on, and also to be able to explain why we're doing that. So just something to think about. Any other questions for Patrick on this? Okay, it sounds like we're making good headway. The next committee report, Judy, proficiency-based learning update?
So many exciting things happening here. Amazing. I do want to say that I feel that the tech integrator position has been the best addition to six to 12 education since I've been here, for sure. And what better way to have that happen than to have a trusted staff member in that position? I mean, Bob is just doing an amazing job, and he's worked with some of the administrators as well, he's working with me on the project, and I just, I think it's amazing work that he's doing. I also was struck by the May Maritime presentation because he talked about standards. And, you know, it's really, it's heartening for me as a public educator to see that the organizations out there who give support to school systems are now aware of and talking about standards. Because we, you ask the question, we need that alignment now. Everything we do needs to be aligned. So it's great to know that those people out there who are supporting us and enhancing our kids' education with hands-on things, they are aware that we need to be aligning. As far as proficiency base goes, I think you know that we've been headlong into doing standards work for probably, I don't know, five or six years now. Mostly it's been in grade level spans, K to five, six to eight, nine to 12. This year, our focus really is on getting that vertical alignment, and so that's the work we've been doing so far this fall. Excuse me. We have been working with Katie Thompson, our grade schools partnership coach. She's been working with representatives of curriculum, subject areas, representatives from the high school and the middle school in teams, high school sharing with the middle school what they are doing, what they've done, and vice versa, so that we can make sure to get that vertical alignment. We absolutely have to pay attention to making certain that everything we do K to eight is supporting those graduation standards, and that is a, that's a huge amount of work. So we are really putting the focus particularly on the middle of high school piece right now because that's what's going to make the biggest difference next year, when these eighth-grade kids are up against the proficiency-based diploma. We are really trying to figure that all out with the high school. Our November 8th Professional Development Day, K to 12 is on proficiency-based education. We have different plans, they're working in grade level spans, but then taking that work back and sharing it with each other. So, and most of the planning that has been done for that day was done this summer by the teachers, so the teachers have been involved in planning that day. I think that pretty much sums up what we've done so far. We are hoping that we're going to do a little workshop for you before the November meeting, five to six, and getting you all up to speed on just what proficiency-based education is, a little review of that, and where the district has been and where we're going. Yeah, feeling the heat right now, for sure, the high school is. Any questions?
Any questions for Judy? All right, thank you. We look forward to that workshop. Facilities committee, Patrick, did you want to?
Yeah, just briefly, Tim already talked about one thing. The group talked about the school construction list, and we'll continue to have conversations about that. Dave Richards just gave an update on some of the work that he did, including painting, overhauling the office area, Fisher Mitchell, and some of the plumbing things that he had to do at Fisher Mitchell, the signage at two of our elementary schools. So just an update for the committee. And then the facility use form, at some point, may come back to this, to the board, just because we do get some unique requests to use our facilities, and so we might want to put some language in there. As an example, a few of our services sometimes, you know, will be asked at the BMS gym, and sometimes we don't get, I mean, I understand that we can't always get a lot of advance notice, but different types of services that are asked for us to accommodate, and so we might just want to put some language in this, that we have a little bit more control of the, but that's all, not that we don't want people to use our facilities, but, so we'll probably bring that to you next month.
Any questions on facilities? Right on to, you can hold the mic, First Shit from Ten Inch Report.
So Dean Emerson just texted me that Moore's won 4-0, so I'll pass that on. Just wanted to mention to you that Mary Wellner, one of our special ed techs at Bath Middle School, she will be on the news soon, I don't know if you've seen the segments already, but NewsCenter is doing a thing about inspiring educators, and it's through the Maine Education Association, and you have to be nominated for this award. So Mary works with, you know, various students at BMS, and always described as, you know, hard-working conscientious, staying after school, helping students, you know, just never stopping, very dedicated employee, and we're very fortunate to have her at BMS. So it's an honor for her, that only recognizes so many people. So we'll try to, I'm sure people will tell us what it's on, and we'll link that to our district website and Facebook page as well. So congratulations to Mary. You saw the backup probably, but I just wanted to highlight one program. We have various programs that help integrate our schools together, but one, I think, that we started this year with the help of Jeff DeRosa, who's a special ed teacher at the high school, also an assistant football coach. And we also had Julia Skidmore, who's been our behavior support person at Knightville last year, now at Fisher Mitchell, and Lydia Grass, who's a social worker in the district, have created a program where once a week, our high school football players, not all of them, obviously, but I, you know, I think it's five, five to 10, go down on a weekly basis and work with our students in the behavior support program. And really just model, I mean, work with them, kind of like a big brother type of piece, but also just modeling, you know, what it is to be respectful, kind of the sportsmanship of each team, and just really focusing on respect, and again, being a positive role model. So it's really been a highlight, I mean, you saw some of the things in your backup of other literacy things that we do with older kids going down to work with younger kids, but this one was new, so I just thought I would bring that to your attention and to the public's attention. October 7th, Professional Development Day, high school focus, you have it in your packet, but the high school focus was on proficiency-based learning. The middle school, Bath Middle School, was really focused on expedition, it was the Green Crab Expedition, and Ben Chateau and Monica Wright, two of our teachers, planned the whole day with Brandon's help, and it really was, the feedback that I read through and saw was amazing, that they were the students for the day. And Becky that came from Kelts last month, she was there helping our staff dissect clams and really putting our staff through an expedition, just like the students would. And so it was very valuable, I think Brandon maybe had his reservations, if it would all come off, but it really was very, very positive. And at the elementary level, K to five, we had, really had day focused on how students, or how many students deal with trauma in their life in one way or the other, and how that impacts their daily life, and therefore impacts the behavior at school. And so we had a lot of different organizations come in. We had some of our own staff that do our behavior programs, to special ed staff, to regular ed staff, that did sessions that day, I think, that were powerful. But we also had people coming in from outside organizations all over the state to do a venue of options that our teachers could choose from. So it really was, the feedback was very positive, and I do wish to thank our elementary principals and Judy for planning that day. Very well done, and I think it really, I took away a few things from that day, the attending sessions that I wish I had put into perspective back when I was a teacher. And so I think a lot of people took a lot of positive things away from that day. And just lastly, the administrative team has been busy visiting classrooms together, providing feedback to teachers, providing feedback to each other, and also principals have all set their goals this year around instruction as well as data in their schools.
Financial report?
Hello, tonight we're talking about September, and so we're moving forward, spending some money. At the end of September, we spent $3.8 million, which is 13.61% compared to last year, we had spent 12.5, so we're spending a little bit more, or a little bit faster, but pretty much on the same wavelength. Revenue, we're at 28.1%, whereas last year was 24%, and that's, could be just a timing thing, but this is the time of year that we start looking at how we're doing with our hiring versus how we had budgeted, which things are looking pretty close. And we also start looking at budget versus actual for tuition and student numbers. And Peter and I were working on that last week, and we're about two students difference down from what we had budgeted, but we won't know, you know, the real impact until those tuition rates come through from the state, and then we'll be able to really, which could show you, you know, budget versus actual. So all of that is in line. We are at, we have auditors coming next week to start the, to finish basically the financial process for the 15, 16 school year. And that's really about it. We have, on your agenda, you have the 2014 renovation bond, I don't know if you want to talk about that now, or you want to wait until that comes up? I just had some updates on that finalized project.
Go ahead.
So you all probably received a copy of this summary of what we did this summer with the bond and the head fund.
Why don't you pass it around? I sent it to you guys probably a month ago by email.
And this just is a summary telling you what we did this summer to sell bonds. And during July and August, we worked with our financial advisor and our attorney, and we put together the whole process. This was new for me, first time ever, we put together a lot of detail about the district and our financial situation and the community and all, and they basically come up with this whole official statement that goes out there to the world wide web and to sell the bonds. So we received, through that process, we received a double A rating from S and P Standards and Core, and according to our financial advisor, this was a very good rating. He added, of course, that triple A is the best, but there's only like seven districts in the state for that. The bonds were split up in two separate increments. We went out and sold 3.7 million, but they split them up into one Series A and one Series B, and the big difference is selling the Series B because basically it's what we anticipate to do with Moore's High School when it comes time to, if we sell, if we did any projects with the bond money for a building that was going to be turned over to a nonprofit, then we had to sell those different increments, on the recommendation of our attorneys. So the bonds were put out there to sell, we received eight bids for the Series A bond and seven bids for the Series B. The interest cost that came in was 1.4% and 1.9%, which was very good. During that whole planning process, we had planned on like 2.85%. So overall, for the cost of this bond, it's about $231,000 less than what we had originally anticipated, about $25,000 less annually for debt service payment we started out. So that was a good thing. And so with those funds, they went right to our account, and we paid off that savings, and ready to make a first payment in February, just interest. And then the principal payments, which again, follow in budget.
Any questions for Deborah? I have one on the budget, and you may not have an answer to this, but maybe for the next meeting. I noticed in, I want to say Justin's report, he had mentioned that one of his concerns was we had about 41 new students, unanticipated students entering the district who had certain special ed requirements, and I was curious how much that was going to impact the special ed budget. I know that he doesn't mention in his report how many students that we may have budgeted for that may have left the district, but I'd like to know what the net effect was. I know last year, looking at the budget, the one item that seemed to always be over was... was special ed, and I'm curious if those 41 kids, if there are high needs or low needs, or if there's one-on-one, but how that ultimately is going to affect the budget going into this year?
Well, we're watching that, um, because as far as, we don't have a lot that are really going to outside placements, but we do have a lot right now that are, um, being met with one-to-one long-term substitutions, until they get additional support, um, from some of these outside placements. One of our providers brings in EHPs, and so they're, he's working on that. So, you know, it's always an unknown, and unfortunately, it's hard to track, but we definitely are watching, you know, our enrollment and where they're going. So I think, hopefully, between the staffing and, um, this direction, our transportation costs for special ed are pretty high, he's going to be looking at that and talking about that during these meetings to see if there's any changes that you can do there, so, you know.
Yeah, if possible, either by the next meeting or the following meeting, just if you could coordinate with him, come up with a rough number as to, you know, we anticipate, is this how it's going to compact that line item, based on those numbers, or, you know, we don't see it having a significant impact, or even if the answer is, we don't know at this point. But I'd like to make the connection between 41 unanticipated students and what that cost Great. Anything else for Deborah?
Well, it matters to me if we could stay, because I, I had a couple of questions, so we're sort of morphing into old business, so, just Patrick, I mean, are those 41, is that, is that a usually high number? Do you recall what, what came into the district last year? No, I don't, I don't know that if it's, if it's significantly higher than, uh, last year, because I know last year we had quite a few move in as well, out in the first couple of months, so I'd have to go back and look and, uh, have Justin dive into that. I mean, one thing we did talk about was having Justin, I mean, this is not atypical to, to our issue one, but having Justin maybe come to the December Finance Committee meeting to kind of give the Finance Committee, uh, overview of, um, you know, what, what's involved in special ed, what's, what's in the budget, what's not in the budget, what's in local entitlement, which is grant money, um, so to get the, to anybody that'd like to come to that as well, to get a better, bigger picture of what special ed includes.
I can answer that. Including the distribution for those kids, can they have, like, elementary-level moving transfer?
And, and just, just for my own sanity, so I slipped, I mean, having an IEP doesn't necessarily mean that you have intensive services, you know, you can have an IEP and be mainstream classroom, but you're just, you know, there, there might be some more objectives that, that we're tracking, but it doesn't necessarily mean that.
Right, and the next thing, a special ed teacher could, you know, that has a caseload, you know, some of these students go on those caseloads, it doesn't, um, and may just receive, somebody maybe just, just receives speech, somebody may receive just OT, um, so yeah, I mean, it could be something, or maybe just have a learning disability in, in reading, so needs two hours of additional reading instruction a week with a, with a special ed teacher or, or ed tech. So, yeah, it could be, so I can give you a more breakdown and send that out to the
Okay, item 10.0, old business, uh, just review the goals. Any comments on the goals, where we're at, any thoughts from the board? Kenny?
I think that after, you know, coming, again, to these meetings, to kind of see have we touched our goals through a meeting, and so, in this meeting so far, we have, um, covered, I would say, you know, three out of four goals, in terms of, you know, we've been, communication goals, we've talked, we've talked about, talking to the communications person, kind of mapping out what's going to be the next step for our building committee. Um, we certainly talked a lot about, um, the goal, the goal number two, because we're talking about the straw poll, the site approval, concept approval. We even talked about, um, increasing our knowledge, because I guess we're going to get a presentation on proficiency-based education, which is a school 3A, so, you know, I, I even think we didn't touch on goal four, because, you know, with the presentation from the May Maritime Museum, we're certainly talking about how to develop, and how do you need programming thematically, and probably fit made into what Pittsburgh is thinking about. So I think we've done a good job within that.
Great, I think that's a good idea, you know, each meeting, talk about, have we, are we touching on this, are we addressing? Any other thoughts? Okay, uh, we have one second reading, uh, this is policy J I C K, bullying and cyberbullying in schools. This is an action item. Is there a motion regarding this policy? Uh, moved to a dot by Steve. Is there a second? Second by Alan. Okay, any further discussion on this, comments, Steve?
Sure, this is J I C K, one, two, three, those are state.
Yeah, they are, and that's the only thing that, um, hasn't been totally hashed through yet with our administrative team. They gave feedback on this policy in general, but the forms, as Jen, you know, was on the Policy Committee, and Megan, um, may remember that those forms were a little cumbersome, in my opinion, it was a lot to them. I mean, obviously documentation is important when we're going through this. We kind of have a system already in place, and what I need to do is to take a little time and, and see how, maybe there's some things with those forms that will be good to include on ours, but, um, I don't, so I, you know, there's J, Jep 1, 2, and 3 that we may not use, that's, you know, referred to with this policy, so I'm not sure if you want to hold off into November, or, um, or you just want to make the motion, amend the motion for the fact that, um, we're going to use our own forms. I don't think we need a policy for the forms. Obviously, it's a part of an administrative procedure.
It's just that the, the forms, the reason it comes out is because the form should be appended to the, I looked, you know, I saw the reference, I looked, they have the forms.
So we need to probably remove them from this policy, so, I mean, there's no rush, but we have a policy that's, as you can see from the list, somewhat close to this now that we're using, and we can bring it back to you in November.
I mean, I, I still think we are adopting policy, the policy itself, just, if we want to, if we want to modify, but remove a reference to the forms, that's given us.
So Steve, do you want to amend your motion?
I, I move that we adopt the, uh, policy J I C K, uh, with, and removing the references to forms 1, 2, and 3. A whole bunch of them.
Any other discussion on this policy? Other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to adopt with an amendment to remove the forms 1 through 3, raise your hand. None opposed? Passes in and out. And that's all we have for second readings of policy, uh, under new business. Patrick, you have one retirement?
Just wanted to, um, announce a retirement of Jay Lamont, uh, Assistant Principal at Morse. Uh, Jay's been in the district for 21 years, he was an athletic director, which I didn't know, and he was also a, a teacher here at Morse, and the last 15 years, he's been Assistant Principal at Morse, so I'd like to thank Jay, and, uh, he's decided to retire, and I'm happy for him, and so I'd like to just thank him for 21 years of service for our issue one.
Okay, and hopefully we can get him involved in some of these Morse building committees this time of. Item 11.2, uh, we've done that, update on the construction bond, um, 11.3, we had moved up. Uh, item 12.0, public comment, last chance. Uh, item 13.1, set next meeting date, our next board meeting is scheduled for November 28th, uh, and that one will be at Dyke Newell. Everybody have that on your calendar?
Should we be holding 5 o'clock for now, let's figure otherwise?
For the workshop?
For the workshop, just so it's not a surprise, you know, he changed it.
Okay, anything else? And, uh, item 14.0, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Steve, second by Lou. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, raise your hand, and this meeting is adjourned.